You ready? Okay, I'd like to welcome you to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Virtual Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce Jacob Trimble, Acting Director of Planning and the planners assigned to tonight's petition. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petition at an executive meeting in early July. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting will be distributed to the planning commissioners in their executive meeting agenda packet. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning Department staff will show photos of the petition site. Then the petitioner will present the request. He or she will be allotted fifteen minutes. Then persons in favor and opposition or with concern will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Please note, you may only speak one time. To indicate you wish to speak, click the raise hand icon to the right of your name on the participant list. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, only the petitioner will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After the meeting concludes, a poll will appear allowing you to indicate whether you are in favor and opposition or with concern. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the County Council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, we'll hear tonight's petition, which is PC 11-107 LH. And we're ready.
Good evening. We have one petition on tonight's agenda. This is a request for a change in zoning from C8 Plan Commercial District to MXD Mixed Use Development District for the site in South County in the Sappington Concord area. It is the former MetLife campus. It's about ninety-nine acres. Here's the land use map, so you can see the site shaded back in gray. And it has the former office building, associated parking surrounding the building, as well as a large lake. The surrounding land uses, Tesson Ferry is pretty much entirely commercialized on both sides. And then behind the commercial frontage on Tesson Ferry is mostly single-family detached residences. There are a couple of instances of multiple family residences. And then there is attached, single-family residential development that's sort of hugged by the site. So here's the aerial, you can see the building, the existing building, as I mentioned, as well as some of the creeks that do go through the site. And then I'm going to show some site photos. You'll see on the left, sort of a key map where the yellow arrow indicates sort of where I was when I took the photo and where today I was facing. So here's sort of the front entrance from Tesson Ferry. You can see the sign that was posted on the site. Looking north along Tesson Ferry, there is the abutting retail and restaurant to the north. And you can see some of the commercial uses across Tesson Ferry on the east side. Looking northeast across Tesson Ferry, there's a McDonald's fast food restaurant, as well as a vacant commercial property. This is the intersection where the entrance to the site is. And then looking south along Tesson Ferry, you can see the existing freestanding sign, as well as some more of the commercial uses. Another view from sort of inside the site, looking east towards Tesson Ferry. And then looking south, there's the QT convenience store, south of the site, fronting on Tesson Ferry. This is looking right through, right down the entrance to the site from Tesson Ferry. And then moving in a little bit, you can see some of the existing parking. And then sort of behind the trees is the office building itself. Now I'm sort of in the northeastern part of the site, looking southwest towards the existing entrance and where the garage, the subterranean garage is located. And then looking northeast towards the other access drive that comes into the site. You can see on the inset map, it also goes out to Tesson Ferry. This is looking west of the subject site over the, there is an existing chain link fence along the perimeter. This is looking west over the chain link fence towards some of the residences accessed on via Keller Road. The road is a bit lower than the site, so you can see the homes from the subject site. Looking northeast along Keller Road, sort of the same area I was just describing. This is inside of the site, looking west, so you can see this parking area. And then on the horizon, the chain link fence that is on the east side of Keller and some of the residences across Keller Road. Now I am quite, quite far inside the site on the existing parking lot, looking southeast towards the existing lake. And then moving around the lake, this is closer to where the dam, existing dam area is, looking back northeast towards the structure. This is where the dam lets out. It goes quite a ways. We're still hundreds of feet from the abutting properties. And then here's where the dam, where the inlet is. Northwest, a little bit closer to the existing structure. And then this is off the site. We went around and into the Sunset Meadows subdivision. So you can see this is where Sunset Meadows sort of, there's a little eyebrow cul-de-sac. So we're looking northeast and the trees behind this house are on the subject site. This is looking between two of the homes in the Sunset Meadows subdivision. So you can see this, this chain link fence is on or quite close to the common property line. This is the abutting residence that, that has access onto Keller Road. So we're looking at the very southwestern corner of the subject site. On the other side of this chain link fence, these trees are on the site. Then coming back up Keller Road, looking northeast into the site, so you can see a little bit of that grade change I was describing and the existing chain link fence. This is a little bit further down Keller Road. Moving along Keller Road a bit more. And then here is the sign that was posted on Keller Road. And then we'll have the petitioner's presentation. George, do you have the PowerPoint?
Well, I do. I just need to get it up on the screen here.
I'm going to give you the presenter role now.
Okay, thank you.
So you'll just need to share your screen.
Bear with me just a moment, Mel. Bear with me just a moment, Mel.
You're fine, George.
Take me a minute to find it and get it.
It's coming up.
Okay. Mel, do you see it?
I can see it.
Okay, wonderful. Then I'll get started. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission members. My name is George Stock and I am with Stock and Associates Consulting Engineers Incorporated. This evening, I'm here on behalf of LH CV3 LLC, owner of the subject property located at 13045 Tesson Ferry Road, which totals ninety-nine point three four acres. Also attending this evening's meeting and available to answer questions is Mr. Tim Breeze, the managing member of the LH CV3 LLC Ownership Group. It is our privilege this evening to present this exciting development opportunity to the St. Louis County Planning Commission and all interested parties. Prior to this meeting, we held two informal meetings with a small group of interested community stakeholders, as well as a large open town hall style meeting on April 29th, 2021. It was held at the subject property. Both meetings were coordinated through Councilman Tracus. And before we get too far, on behalf of the Ownership Group and our team, we want to thank Councilman Tracus for his ongoing communication and continued assistance leading up to this evening. Also, Ms. Wilson, we'd like to thank you, Mr. Trimble, and also Ms. Choate. Since we've been looking at this particular property for a little over a year, I know Ms. Choate has now retired, but she was very helpful in guiding us with our vision. Tonight, our request is your consideration to recommend rezoning the C8 Zone property, ordinance number thirteen three forty-one, from C8 to a mixed-use district. A lot of what Ms. Wilson just covered will be somewhat repetitive as I go through this particular drawing. The site, as I mentioned, is ninety-nine point three five acres. It's outlined in red. The site's frontage and access is Tesson Ferry Road. The property is served by two existing signalized intersections, which are aligned with Butler Hill Road, which is the north access, and to the south, Old Tesson Ferry Road. Tesson Ferry Road is a five-lane, fully improved, including a continuous left turn lane and paved shoulders. Our intent is to utilize the intersection in place and modify the south entrance, which today you saw on a slide, is a private drive, and redesign it into a new boulevard-style public street with roundabouts. Existing on the site is the former General American MetLife Corporate Office Building, which totals approximately six hundred and fifty thousand square feet, or five point two four acres of building, along with twenty acres of asphalt parking lot, sidewalks, and ring roads. Ordinance thirteen thousand three hundred and forty-one, which is in place, and we're requesting your consideration to repeal it, allows up to nine hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred square feet. So the campus is never fully constructed to its ultimate gross square footage. Existing development that surrounds the site, much of this Ms. Wilson covered, but I'll do it again. We have Emo's Pizza, an office building, U.S. Bank. These three sites are located just south of the Butler Hill Spur, intersection with Tesson Ferry Road. Immediately to the north of it is the South County Baptist Church. Located northwest along Keller Road are two residential subdivisions, Chatham Manor and Keller Manor. Both of these are zoned R1A PEU, which allow a density of twenty-two thousand square foot per home. And the reason I'm bringing this up in the initial presentation is to have an understanding to the Planning Commission of the transitional zoning of the mixed use and what we're proposing. Located to the south of the property is the Sunset Meadows subdivision, which is a single-family residential subdivision zoned R2. The allowable density is fifteen thousand square feet per home. Along that southern property line and along the western property line is the chain link fence. Along the south property line is also Ameren's overhead electric facilities and a substation, which is located down in this corner. Also to the south is the Fellowship Praise Church, the Tesson Grove Professional Center, the Belleville Fire District, and the Tesson Gardens, which is an attached residential community zoned R6 double A. The density allowed within that development is forty-five hundred square feet per home. And then lastly, there's the Quick Trip Convenience. Regarding the site topography, as you saw in the photos, there's quite a bit of site topography through the site. The highest point of the site is the northeast corner, which is at elevation six hundred and thirty-eight, to a low point, which is generally adjacent along south property line to the Sunset Meadows, elevation five twenty. So through the site, although it's generally flat where the development is, there's a hundred and eighteen feet of vertical relief. Also, one of the key features on the property is the three point five acre lake, which will be enhanced and continue to be utilized for stormwater management under the redevelopment plan. This particular site, having been a corporate campus, has adequate utilities. Missouri American Water has distribution lines along Tesson Ferry, as well as Keller Road. The Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District has a trunk sanitary sewer that comes from the south, north into the site. And then telecommunication, Ameren Spire, AT&amp;T, all have multiple facilities abutting the property. Our goal for Tesson Ridge is to develop a distinctive and sustainable residential community, along with a mix of limited commercial development. This plan illustrates the four distinct communities, all integrated as Tesson Ridge. Particular attention to the design and the land plan of this community has been integrated by incorporating the appropriate transitional uses and density to be commensurate with the surrounding residential development that exists today. So starting with Planning Area 1A, 1B, which is in orange, these are the properties that generally front Tesson Ferry Road. They total seven point nine acres. This is branded and will be named the Shops at Tesson Ridge, which will feature approximately seventy thousand square feet of commercial space tenants, which could include retail, restaurant, general office, medical, and wellness office, to provide amenities and services to the Tesson Ridge community and surrounding neighborhoods. Planning Area Two, as we move west from Tesson Ferry Road, this totals nine point eight seven acres and is branded as the Villas at Tesson Ridge. The Villas at Tesson Ridge will be luxury, single-family villa homes available for purchase. These villas will be meticulously designed with modern finishes that look as beautiful as they feel. The development will include no more than sixty villas priced from two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and up. The overall density within this nine point eight seven acres, sixty villas, is approximately seventy-one hundred square feet per home. And that compares to the forty-five hundred square foot per the development that's immediately to the southeast. Planning Area Three, which is the central core, is twenty-one point six two acres, and it'll be known as the Residents at Tesson Ridge. The residents at Tesson Ridge are upscale rental units designed with high levels of quality and luxury. Each residence will have modern features and finishes, including upscale kitchens and spacious living areas. Residents will have access to luxury community amenities, including a fitness center, swimming pool, sport courts, and community room. You're able to choose between multiple, several, unique floor plans. The project will include two hundred and ten upscale residential units. Planning Area Four, which is the westernmost, that abuts Keller Road and abuts the property to the south, in a little bit darker green. It's the largest. It's fifty-seven point four three acres. It'll be branded as the Manners at Tesson Ridge. The Manners at Tesson Ridge will offer the best of modern amenities with outstanding value and exceptional quality. These homes will be representative of the style and quality of construction in the neighboring communities. And Ms. Wilson, thank you very much for those photographs. I think they were very representative of the quality that we intend to build. Homes will be priced between the low five hundreds and one million. This one-of-a-kind community built by a premier home builder with experience in the luxury market will consist of no more than a hundred and ten homes and represents the best of suburban and modern living. Within this particular development of fifty-seven point four three and a hundred and ten homes, that brings the density to twenty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-three square feet per home. So a little bit larger than the two subdivisions at twenty-two thousand, and a little bit larger than the subdivision to the south of fifteen thousand square feet. Incorporated around the perimeter will be a fifty-foot buffer. And this is a woodland buffer, of which would be implementing additional landscaping, the supplement, removing the chain link fence. Along the southern property line, we will implement a hundred-foot buffer. Within this buffer are the, or is the, overhead Ameren electric facilities. Those would remain in place. The chain link fence will also be removed along here and replaced as well. So part of the, the vision of this particular property, as we've mentioned, is the sustainability. It's really the removal of the asphalt paving, minimizing the asphalt paving. Preservation is a key consideration for this development. In order to modernize the site with an eye for conservation, the project will preserve the existing structures where possible to reduce its environmental footprint. This approach has many benefits, including a reduction of building materials needed to transform the space. Again, this view that you're seeing here is from Tesson Ferry, basically looking west at the new street and the roundabouts. And to the left is the entrance to Area Three, down at the bottom where the SUVs pulling out. That's the entrance into Area 1A, the commercial sector. And the first roundabout is the entrance that would go into the Planning Area Two, the sixty villas. So restored green spaces. In an effort to promote conservation and highlight the natural beauty of the site, which was evidenced by the photos Ms. Wilson put up, a significant portion of previously paved surface-level parking will be moved underground into the existing building. The Tesson Ridge development will restore significant green space throughout the property, featuring playgrounds, large yards, sport courts, walking trails, and even gardens. So a little bit about traffic. We engaged the services of Lockmueller Group, professional transportation consultant, to evaluate this proposal relative to the Tesson Ferry Road capacity. So this property, as you, as we mentioned, was once formerly a institutional campus for General American and MetLife. And when it was fully occupied, the existing office building, of which was approximately six hundred and fifty thousand square feet, would have generated approximately seven hundred and fifty trips during both the morning peak and the afternoon peak, which were seven to nine AM and four to six PM. The current zoning, as I mentioned previously, allows significantly more, thirty percent more, although that was never constructed, but potentially there could be a thousand trips if this was repurposed as a office campus. Under the proposed mixed use, it is estimated that only two hundred and sixty-five trips would be generated during the morning peak hour, while five hundred and twenty trips would be generated during the afternoon peak hour. The trip patterns would also be much more evenly balanced, as opposed to concentrated within the AM peak, AM and PM peaks, when the, an office building typically functions. The two signalized access points on the Tesson Ferry favorably accommodate the projected traffic needs. As we mentioned, Tesson Ferry Road is fully constructed as a five-lane section with paved shoulders. The conceptual plan provides access from all the internal roadways with no additional access directly onto Tesson Ferry Road. And what I'm speaking to, there are those outlets or commercial area 1A, 1B. All of that traffic would, again, function internally, flow internally to the signals, no additional access out onto Tesson Ferry Road. So in other words, this development, fully constructed, would generate about twenty-five percent less traffic than what historically the office building once did. So landscaping is an important component to the project. I jumped too far ahead. I apologize. So a little bit more with regards to the repurposing. So this is a view of the Planning Area Three, or the multifamily, looking at the main entrance with the building being re-cladded, the addition of a lot of landscaping and enhancing for the residents who choose to live here. This is a view on the internal component of the building, or the horseshoe, where you see the outdoor living, you see the swimming pool, you see the enhancements to the lake and the engagement of the lake, of sitting areas, the pool, sitting, additional pavilions, and places to barbecue. This is another view, once again, looking over the lake, looking back at the inside of the building, the re-cladded. You can see the finishes and the handrails of the units, which are able to engage and take advantage of the views. And again, a lot of landscaping. Landscaping is a very important component to the development. And this is just looking down in plan view of some of those amenities that we mentioned. You know, the surface parking being removed, the lower level of the building being all garage parking, theater, clubhouse, multipurpose, fitness center, pool, clubhouse, dock, and then the garage entrances, and then obviously everything focused on the lake. Again, just some additional landscaping and amenities that'd be out around the pool, again, for the residents. Again, some additional amenities around the lake that are being added, the sport court, dog park, path around the lake, path to the residence. So when you look at the site plan, and again, these planning areas, this development would occur in phases. And so the first phase would really be the new public street being constructed from Tesson Ferry Road extending west to the two roundabouts, providing the access points for Planning Area Two, which are the villas, and then Planning Area Four, which would be the Manners, which is the single-family home. As part of that construction of this street would be the new utilities coming in, and then also the heavy landscaping that would be focused along the street, the boulevard, and then the heavy landscaping that would be built around the perimeter of Planning Area Three, one to provide a buffer from those residents in Planning Area Three, looking out onto two and four, and vice versa, from two to four, looking within. So Loomson Associates is our landscape architect, and they've spent a lot of time coming up with a landscape plan that does what I just mentioned, perimeter landscape buffing, buffer around our different planning areas, along the primary street coming into the site, the fifty-foot buffer being supplemented where there's gaps and openings with additional landscaping, and then really the protection of the hundred-foot buffer, which is really a retention of the existing landscaping that's in place. And then as this project progresses and moves forward, there will be site-specific site development section plans for these planning areas, and those two would include detailed landscape plans for those projects as they move forward. And I do want to point to a couple things here before I move on to the next slide. You have the large lake, which I mentioned, which is three point five eight acres. And then you'll notice these areas, which are stormwater BMPs, which are placed strategically with the topography on, on the site, and a number of different locations provide stormwater management. So with that said, stormwater was one of those items that is a concern of the residents. Again, this site sits up, and property owners to the south are the recipients of the natural drainage, which comes through an open tributary running through the site. So a little bit about the stormwater. And again, the plan on the left is an overall, and then the plan on the right is a, is an enhanced or enlarged version of the Phase One plan. So stormwater from Tesson Ridge today discharges the site in three locations. Planning Areas 1, 2, 3, and parts of 4, parts of 4 being down here in the lower southwest, they drain and discharge via the open storm tributary that discharges the site in this location. The tributary flows south, this, this tributary flows south through the existing residential subdivisions and their lake south of the development. Special design and construction of interim stormwater pollution prevention BMPs will be implemented. A pre-construction survey of the off-site lake would be performed to develop the as-built condition of the lake, and then a post-construction as-built survey would be performed to confirm that the post-condition after development, the volume of the lake matches what was in the pre-developed condition. We received a letter Friday afternoon from Smith Edmondson, representing Quail Creek Subdivision. Quail Creek Subdivision is a little bit further south of Sunset Meadows. They expressed concerns with construction activities and potential adverse impacts which may occur to their lake. The letter that was sent is consistent with the remarks made by a resident at our town hall meeting. Apparently, past developments unrelated to this property did adversely impact them, and they do not want a recurrence. We agree and will work with Quail Creek Subdivision as this process progresses. Portions of Planning Area Four discharge portions of the site in the northwest corner, as well as the southwest corner of the property, tributary to Keller Road. Multiple permanent stormwater management basins will be constructed in all four planning areas. These will be in addition to the three point five eight acre lake that will remain within Planning Area Three. The stormwater management basins will be designed to serve multiple purposes. First, they will be designed to mimic the pre-developed hydrology of the site. The first one point one four inch of rain will be collected within the basins and infiltrated, evaporated, and transpiration to provide water quality and volume reduction of stormwater runoff. These basins will provide channel protection, which reduces and eliminates high volatiles of stormwater discharge. The channel protection is, is holding a two-and-a-half-inch rainfall event or a one-year storm within the stormwater's basin and still releasing over twenty-four hours to eliminate any erosive losses. In addition, the two-year twenty-four hour, the one-year twenty-four hour will be attenuated and released below the pre-developed runoff rates from the site. Some of the questions that were raised at the town hall meeting, which we, we did respond to, but for the Commission, just to make you aware of those, there's a question with regards to the potential sinkholes. We've had a geotechnical investigation done of the site, and there was no evidence of any sinkholes. There was a question with regards to blasting. It is not our intention to have any blasting on the site. In addition, there were some questions with regards to the stormwater relative to redirection of stormwater. And the pre-developed patterns of stormwater, which I briefly described, will remain unchanged. There'll be no redirection of stormwater. And again, stormwater will be attenuated and released at the pre-developed or below the pre-developed rates after post-construction. Other comments were made was relative to access. This vehicular access, as I mentioned earlier, we have two fully full signalized intersections to Tesson Ferry Road. So all traffic, vehicular traffic will be to Tesson Ferry Road. There was a question as to a hundred-foot buffer along the south property line. Where is that measured from? It is measured. It is measured from the property line. The property line and the chain link fence are basically one in the same, the fences along the property line. There's some questions with regards to that fence, who maintains it. The Teson Ridge developer has stated and continues to state that they would be open to replacing that fence with a much newer and better quality fence and maintaining that fence. And we are on record as indicating that we would work with the residents with that fence and its location relative to their property line, as well as the fence along Keller Road. There's a question with regards to some of the overgrown invasive vegetation back in these areas and along the property lines. Any honeysuckle or invasive species will be removed as part of the development. There was a question, and I think I've covered this once before, about the overhead electric would be changed? And the answer is no, the substation stays and the overhead electric along the south property line stays in place. There's a question about interconnectivity of pedestrian walkways. So all four planning areas will be interconnected with sidewalks and walking trails. And then there was a question with regards to wildlife, and that's really focused on the fact that, you know, there's so much woodlands back here. And I think, you know, just as development occurs, it occurs in, in a sequence. And the first sequence is generally surveyors coming into those woodland areas, placing stakes, and then it's a contractor that's coming in, putting in the siltation and erosion control. And through those processes, the wildlife moves and continues to relocate from the site typically on an interim basis. And then the clearing and the grading occurs, and then once the vegetation is reestablished and development occurs, the wildlife comes back. So those were the questions that were raised, many of those we responded in writing, but wanted the commission to be aware of those, and that concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stock. Questions? Anyone? No one? Okay. Melissa, you want to take it from here with the?
All the commissioners.
Anyone wanting to speak?
I don't know if anyone needed to unmute themselves.
Want to try it again? Commissioners, anybody? Would you like to speak?
Yes, Wayne, this is State. Is all the commercial, is that all CA?
Well, no, it would be, it would be a, the zoning would be mixed, there would be no CA zoning. This entire property would be mixed, and under your mixed district, primarily more than 50% of the development must be residential. So you can obviously see that at least 80% of this development is residential, and we have very limited commercial.
Right.
Outlined in orange.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else? We see no one. Is everybody unmuted?
I think it might be it for the commission.
Okay, Mel, you want to take it from here?
Sure, so if you would like to make a comment, you would need to click the raise hand button next to your name on the participant list. It might also be in the bottom right-hand corner, but if you aren't seeing the raise hand button, you can send me a message. I'm the generic host, you can send me a message, and we will make sure we get your comment. But we are going to start with Nancy Atkins, let me go unmute her. Nancy?
Yes, hello.
You're unmuted to make your comment.
Oh, yes, well, I, I don't understand the push for the luxury communities. And to simply put, the, the project is just too dense for our area. I think a more moderate approach would be more in order, using half, leaving half. I'm aware of Mr. Breeze's background, I've been reading up on him and all of his accomplishments. And ideally, just right down the road from where the headquarters of proper industries are in St. Charles is eight acres ready and available, zoned for scientific and lab research, which was mentioned. And the project is, is part of the commercial use. And if that's not the case, and it's going to be commercial, there's so much stuff sitting empty on Teson Ferry right now. I can't see the need or the reason for any more commercial buildings sitting there, drawing in customers and tenants, when we should use what's already there first. The entrance is already, you know, there's large, beautiful, mature trees there, which I don't see why we have to rearrange that, knock those down, build new. The pictures that I've seen here are very impressive, have the overall completed picture. But it's going to take many, many years for all of those trees to become the mature ones that are already existing. And I think that what is, should be left there on the side by the QT on the southwest side should just be left alone to do their job, clean our air, and just don't take it all, is all I'm asking. Leave some of it, just like it is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we all have Mary Ann Ojale. Mary Ann, did you want to make a comment?
Oh, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, hi, yeah, I, I just want to make a comment about the landscaping along Keller and the back property of probably the, what is the proposed individual homes. That current fence that is already up, which I do realize that you said you were going to take down, and then you would put the landscaping buffer in. I don't know what your plans are as far as fencing. I'm, I'm actually hoping as a resident off of Keller to not have a fence. I think it's a problem for our wildlife, but I, I understand that it might be something that you may want to put up to separate the development from, I guess, Keller Road. So my comment is really just to see if you have, can come up with some better options other than like a vinyl fence or a chain link fence. I would prefer nothing at all but a denser landscaping buffer, just so that the wildlife can travel back and forth and freely. But I know that may or may not be an issue for you in the neighborhood, because it also lets traffic come there too. So I just want to make a comment that, could we look at some other solutions other than a vinyl fence or a chain link fence? So that, that was one thing. And then I had another comment that I may, I emailed to a gentleman that was on the website. Let's just say that the developers come back with a change in their proposal. Does it need, if it, I mean, at what point, when it varies, does it need to come back to the, the hear, a hearing again versus just the change is approved? Does that, am I making myself clear on that question?
Yes.
Say you want to go, okay, so does it, at what point? Or is that just basically the plan that once there's a, if there's a change, and you all don't feel like it fits within the proposal today that you're, you're proposing, does it come back to another hearing so that the, the neighborhood gets to hear that and make a plea either way?
Oh, you want to answer that?
I can answer that now.
Yes, please.
I apologize, my camera is sort of eating up my bandwidth, but this is Jacob Trimble, acting director of planning. If this MXD will have a site-specific ordinance that is legally enforceable, that will ultimately be, that will govern the site by the county, and it will be approved by the county council through the review process for this. If there are any requests or modifications that are outside of that ordinance, it would not be approved. The petitioner, if it was within the bounds of what they requested this public hearing, there could be very minor modifications that could be made to the ordinance. However, that would be very minor types of things for any sort of major change to the site, including expansion of, of any of the uses could, could necessitate another public hearing.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, next, next will be Brad Goss. Brad, you are unmuted to give your comment.
Thank you, I did have an aerial photo, is there any way I can show that on, on the screen? That I can share that or not?
Um, yeah, let me, I'm going to make you the presenter, and then you'll have to share your screen.
Okay.
You should be able to share your screen now.
Perfect.
We can see that.
Perfect, thank you so much. My name is Brad Goss, I represent the trustees of Meadows at Quail Creek. Rebecca Fields, Cindy Carver, and Scott Gutcher are the trustees. And I put on the screen the development and the stream that feeds into the Meadows at Quail Creek. The Meadows at Quail Creek have several lakes in the subdivision. They're really the key feature of the subdivision, they're very important of the subdivision. And you can see the circle in blue is where the tributary stream enters the Meadows at Quail Creek. And that's the northernmost pond in the Meadows at Quail Creek. It's about 1,000 feet away from the development, and you can see blue lines on the aerial on the development itself. There's approximately four streams, the one stream that then is the principal stream that feeds into the Meadows at Quail Creek. So the trustees are concerned, and we did write a letter to the developer, and the planning commission should have copies of that, expressing our concerns about sediment runoff. When Delmar Gardens South was developed and an adjacent subdivision was developed, their sediment control failed. And so the ponds, the lakes were flooded with sediment and debris, and it took about $300,000 of, of expense to clean up those lakes and ponds. And so we very much are wanting to avoid a repeat of that experience. And I very much appreciate Mr. Stock raising our letter and his presentation, and the offer to have the pre-construction survey and post-construction survey, because that indeed is one of the things that the trustees are requesting, so that we can make sure that we're monitoring what is going on. We would like to meet with the developer and understand what the sediment control measures are as it relates to the streams and our subdivision, and that we be given copies of the inspection reports as they're ongoing, and just be able to participate in that process, which I realize is a little bit unusual. Usually the comment is made, look, the stormwater is going to be managed, you don't need to worry about this. But this subdivision is particularly sensitive, given their history that they had with another development. And we would welcome the opportunity to work with the developer to make sure that the sediment and erosion control is managed properly so that there isn't impact on the lakes, and there isn't a need to have them cleaned up afterwards, after the subdivision. We do appreciate the offer of the developer to do that. Happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Okay, anyone? Okay, seeing none, we thank you.
Okay, George, I'm going to give you the presenter role again, if you could just put that sort of main concept exhibit back up.
Sure.
Okay, next will be, you're on here as Rebecca, but please state your name for the record when I unmute you here. Okay, Rebecca, you are unmuted.
Hello, thanks for unmuting, I'm Rebecca Fields, I'm one of the trustees. I wasn't aware Mr. Goss was going to be speaking, so he basically has covered everything that I was going to say, and I didn't get a chance to lower my hand.
Okay, thank you. Next will be Ava Emo. Ava, you are unmuted. Ava, are you there? It looks like you are unmuted, but I cannot hear you, Ava Emo. So we will have to come back, and if need be, please type your comment into the chat, and I can read it. Next, we will have James Lang. James, you are unmuted to give your comment.
Thank you. Good wishes to Mr. Hilsinger, I hope you get rid of that cough, Mr. Steve, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Waller.
Is this Jim Lang?
It might be. I.
Farmer, farmer commissioner?
Yeah, farmer, yes, yes. I was a good farmer.
You were.
I, and, and as you guys know, I live in the area. Living in South County for all of my 62 years, and the last 15 of them are in County. I, I just want to tell Mr. Stock and your ownership group what a beautiful plan you've put together here. I think the big purposing of the MetLife office building is just an excellent idea. Could be something that many other people are looking at in the future as we repurpose things as we come out of the pandemic. But excellent use of that building. I think it takes, it looks like to me that building takes a lot of views from the lake and really builds, you know, the assets of the property while still keeping a buffer away from us. Obviously, Star Martyr in our area is a, is a big deal, because it definitely has to be managed, and everybody wants to know exactly what's going on. And I think the, the planners have done an excellent job. I, I just, of all the things that have, could have gone in the space when we were talking about NGA possibilities and everything else, I'm very pleased it came out of this. Good luck to everybody, I hope it moves forward and look forward to having new neighbors.
Thank you. Jim, thank you.
You're welcome.
And next will be Bill Cramper. Bill, you are unmuted to give your comment.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Yes, I've lived in it, I have lived in, I've lived in this area for 60 years. And actually, I am a trustee for the Sunset Meadows subdivision, which is already discussed. A lot of our houses back up to the proposed development. A note that I was part of the property conference that was proposed to put in at Bear and Highway 21. However, this time I am favored of this proposal, as are some others, personal friends that I have talked to. Speaking for myself, that is, I hope this proposal goes through, because I think this is what we want to see in our neighborhood. And the developer has well thought of our needs and desires. We appreciate the wonderful houses and the development, and the people, the residents back, back up to the project. Most of them want to see the current 100-foot forest development. We appreciate it, and the development proposed to maintain that fence, which we would, must be a must. As the development continues, I will make our residents clear with what's going on and please, and then I'll do different, future I will have, be able to represent all of them. I'm just waiting to get some more details. Other than that, the only question I have is with regard to the personal, excuse me, the commercial development along Highway 21. I'd rather not see the commercial development, understand that, that is what I have to accept. Understand that that is what I have to accept. My only concern is the type of businesses that are open there. We don't need any tattoo parlors, gas stations, fast food restaurants, restaurants, and so on. And I guess my comment would be to, is there a way to assure services open on Highway 21? Oh, one further comment I forgot to make is this 100-acre gotta be the biggest unused lot available for development. I think this 100-acre proposal is as good as it's going to get. And I sure would like to see it tied up now. What's going to be happening in the future? Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Okay.
If I may just let that speaker know is that as part of the conditions of development of this site, there is the ability of the planning commission and the county council to control the types of uses that go on at this site. And I don't believe that it is the intent of the petitioner to permit fast food restaurants or gas stations. So there will be a limited use, a range of uses for that. So I just wanted to let him know that.
And we're in full agreement.
Yes.
Okay, we will go back to Ava Emo. Ava, are you with us? Ava, if you would type your comment into the chat, I think, I'm not sure what it is with your microphone, but I'm not hearing you. I think that was the last person who had their hand raised. If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand or indicate that you would like to speak in the chat. We do have a comment from Harold Pining about the topography change along Keller Road from the fence to the road. If that topography would remain the same, because the concern is the grass and the plantings that are there seem sort of unmaintained. So there is a concern about that frontage along Keller Road. I'm not seeing any other hands raised.
Okay, can Mr. Stock then answer a few questions?
I'm happy to do so, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think, you know, I think I've really helped in this process. And I look back on, was that April 29th meeting, which was really well-attended. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of speakers, and gave us the ability to introduce ourselves, introduce the project, and then follow up with written responses. We certainly appreciate the compliments. We think it's a well-thought-out plan. We think it's very transitional. You have Tesson Ferry Road, a highway. You have a limited amount of commercial that creates, you know, some opportunities for economic development, some conveniences for the residents, not just of this subdivision, but those residents in South County. Then you move into a little denser attached villa owner occupied, a buddy owner occupied multifamily. Then you move into the center, which is, you know, a brilliant idea by Mr. Breeze and his group to really repurpose the building, a vision of trying to take a large building and how to make it a real asset for the community, something that doesn't exist anywhere else. I don't know how many multifamily developments provide 100% of the resident employee and structured parking below grade, all the amenities that you saw. And then you transition to the single-family homes, which again, based on the number of 110 homes and the acreage, is certainly commensurate with the density surrounding. So we've given it a lot of thought, the pedestrians, the landscaping, the fencing, the questions with regards to the fencing. This is representative of the fencing we're proposing along the entrance coming off Tesson Ferry, running down Keller Road. And this could be the fencing along the south property line. I think the south property line, as I mentioned, we will engage with those residents to check their preference. Because again, this fence is pretty far away from our community. It's really in their backyards. And so we'll work with them as to what the appropriate fencing is. But we don't envision chain link fence or a solid vinyl fence. We see a split board rail fence similar to this. Stormwater, we understand it. It was brought up at the town hall meeting. We see the tributaries. We understand the topography changes. And so we're very cognizant of that, and we will engage the subdivision, the Quail Creek subdivisions, as we move through the process. So again, we really appreciate the compliments, because this is a work that has been in process for a long time. You know, there are many, many opportunities that look at this property as from office to institutional to, you know, I heard the NGA, while I wasn't involved in the NJ being here, I mean, I'm sure this was a site that was, you know, could have been. But it serves the needs of South St. Louis County, which is more housing, you know, more residential housing, more quality residential housing. You know, places where people can live and enjoy the schools and the shopping and all the benefits of being in South St. Louis County. So we're excited about the opportunity and, you know, we have a website. So as questions come forward through that website, you know, we will address those. And as Mr. Trimble elegantly said, this is a planned development district. So it's this commission that writes the requirements. What we presented tonight is what we're building. It's a limited amount of commercial. It's 60 villas. It's 210 multifamily. It's 110 residents. And we expect that to be written in the ordinance. And if there were ever change, it would come back through this process. We acknowledge that. So we certainly appreciate everybody's time tonight, and we will continue to answer questions and feed information to staff to get everything that the planning commission needs to take under consideration. Thank you.
We appreciate your comments. Commissioners, any questions before we close? Seeing no one, thank you very much.
Wayne, if it's all right, I'd like to try to unmute Ava again.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, Ava, you're unmuted. I don't know what it is, Ava. She put in the chat that she thought she, that she thought she fixed it, but I'm not hearing her. Ava, if you could email your comment or put it in the chat, anyone who, anyone who might want to put an additional comment can send it to planning@stluisco.com. But planning@stluisco.com, and any email comments that come in will be made. But I don't think we'll be able to hear her, Mr. Hilsinger.
Okay. You taking a show of hands now?
Oh, yes. So when you leave the meeting, you should receive a survey, a short survey that asks you if you are in favor, opposed, or have concerns for this petition. That hand count would be made part of the record and helps the commission, you know, kind of feel what the feeling the audience was tonight, what the feeling of the general was. So it doesn't, you know, hold bearing on their vote, but it does help inform their decision. So please take that survey when you leave the meeting.
Okay, and with that, we conclude this hearing. And thank you to everyone for listening and participating. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stock. And we are out of here.
Yep, we will see the commission again on Monday, June the 28th at 7:00 PM.
Okay. Do we need a motion to adjourn? Somebody want to make a motion to adjourn? Keith?
I'll make the motion.
Call in favor? Guys have it, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Everyone have a good week.
See you later.
You too.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.